Let's officially call this meeting to the order. This is the February 10th Special Board of Education Meeting. We take the place of the originally scheduled Monday night meeting. It was rescheduled due to weather. Jan, would you like to call our own please?
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Truitt?
Present.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Okay, we have three members, board members present, so therefore we have a course. The meeting is official. Presidency and recognition. The first award will go to the Certified Employee of the Month, Bev Barker, 3K Teacher, Washington 3K Center. My Curtis is going to do that.
Yep. Okay, there are not many people who teach for over 30 years, retire and come back for more. We are honored to recognize Bev Barker as the Employee of the Month for February for many reasons. One reason stands out above all. Bev's class has been quarantined three times so far this year. At the time of this nomination, it hadn't even been twice. As challenging as distance learning can be, Bev has maintained a great attitude through all quarantines during her program. She has gone above and beyond for each of her students while on distance learning. She differentiates instruction, adapts lessons for unique home situations, and even safely brings materials to students' homes. Bev talks to her students on the phone, sends them cards, and connects with families in a special way. We are incredibly proud of her for renovation and willingness to learn new technology in the midst of a global crisis. Bev is a leader in our building and well-respected among her peers. She shares resources and is a mentor to others. It is known that Bev expects high achievement from her students. It is just a part of who she is. She walks the walk by continuing to stay in the know of current research and practices. She's a lifelong learner and teacher. Congratulations, Miss Bev Barker.
Congratulations. For those that aren't from Pocahontas City, I'll go a little further and embarrass her a little bit. Beverly was part of the Barker family that 30, 40 years ago put Pocahontas City tennis on the map. She's probably a three-time state champion, had sisters who were state champions, had a brother who was a year or two younger than me, had a sister older than me, part of the Barker family, just a tradition in Pocahontas City tennis.
She tells a story about playing Chris Everett.
I don't doubt it, Bev. She was good. She was really good.
And you know she's not a digital native if she's been in this business that long. So being quarantined three times, you know, she has embraced the distance learning. And it's harder for people that aren't digital natives. Oh, we're ready.
Okay, next will be the Support Employee of the Month, Maureen Dewey, Secretary at Registration Center.
Maureen has truly gone above and beyond this year. With PCBA being stationed at the Registration Center, she has definitely had more added to her plate. She is always willing to step in and help wherever needed. She assists families in registration, helps Pocahontas City Virtual Academy families and teachers, and has even been seen helping some of the custodial duties when needed. She has been such a huge asset to the PCBA family. We could not have functioned this year without having her help. She has taken all these duties with a smile on her face. She is so deserving of being Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Maureen.
Thank you, Maureen. And the last one will be the Friend of Education, the K County Health Department. And trust me, these people have just done a main job helping us out. There's no thank yous we can say for the Health Department on the COVID vaccinations.
Yes, we have daily communication with them.
Contaguers.
Pocahontas Public Schools would like to recognize the K County Health Department as the Friend of Education. The K County Health Department has been a valuable resource for our school as we entered into these uncharted waters. Amy Wehan and her team at K County Health Department have provided the district with resources for our mitigation efforts, communication protocols for quarantined students and staff, and more importantly, are only a phone call away when we have questions. The partnership that has been forged between the K County Health Department and Pocahontas City Schools has been a benefit to both our students and our community. Pocahontas City is proud to recognize K County Health Department as our Friend of Education.
Thank you again to the K County Health Department. The next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, both legislative and COVID-19.
Okay, I'm going to be pretty brief. This morning was a busy morning. We did have our first legislative update and talked about some of the bills that educators are watching in Oklahoma. And we had our OASA Executive Committee. So I actually have updated this even since those meetings. So we are in the first regular session of the 58th Legislature. And I want to give you just some key points from Governor's address on 201. He, as you know, is committed to having all students back to in-person learning. He mentioned in his State of the State address that he wanted to prioritize educator vaccines to Phase 2. And he said that most educators 65 and plus have been vaccinated with dose 1 and anticipates the remainder to receive dose 1 this month. I will say that all of our 65 and plus educators who want to be vaccinated are done. Some are even going back for their second round. At this point, I do not see all educators being vaccinated by the end of February according to the OSDAH basis. So play that by ear and see what happens. He also suggested re-imaging the state aid formula. He is proposing changing from a three-year lookback or a three-year high enrollment to the number of current students. And this morning, we learned that he is suggesting our July money comes from the previous year, that we don't get to go back to the second-year lookback. He indicated there were 55,000 ghost students costing taxpayers $200 million. He provided many instances of totals taken on families and students because students in some districts do not have the person, the option for in-person learning. He indicated that parents needed to have the option to transfer to public schools that best fits their needs. And there are a lot of key bills regarding the transfers, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. He also proposed holding flat the budget for Common Education and funding the flexible benefits allowances, which are our insurance fund, which we're thankful for that. He said that public schools or schools are the heart of the community, and we do agree with him on that. So here's some bills to watch. This one could affect us momentarily. Senate Bill 1031 is in regard to the Open Meeting Act being able to permit virtual meetings. That expired in December, and I believe it was November 15th actually is when it expired. And it takes legislation to extend that. It has already made it through the Senate, and it went to the House on Monday with no amendments, and it's currently on the governor's desk. And he has not signed it as of this 10 seconds. So that would allow us to move back to virtual meetings, which during these times of COVID would certainly help us out a lot. Let's talk about open transfers. And the governor and many of our legislators are pushing bills to be filed to require open transfers across school districts. So that can be an issue. Here's some key points. Open transfers should allow the receiving district the option of not accepting the transfer. They're saying if there is room in the school, that the student should be able to go there. Right now, districts can't deny receiving students depending upon the circumstances. You know, we take a look at that, take a look at our class size, take a look at lots of things. Open transfers available at any time hinder the ability for districts to plan. We don't know how many students we may have. Districts need estimated student numbers. We need that to determine our staffing and to maintain our appropriate class size that best fits a student's needs. And we need that to identify what innovative programs that allow students opportunities that can be maintained or eliminated. So we need to know our students, and we need those cutoffs, and we need those deadlines. This is a big thing. Through COSA and OSSVA is pushing local control back to the open transfers for the districts. Here's another big thing. Local property owners approve our bond issues to build schools for growth within the district. Classroom space could be eliminated or be taken up with transfers. Local residents would have paid or will pay in the future for facilities or other, for other districts' students. Ad valorem, if we have to take all the transfers, we're not receiving the ad valorem tax money for those students that come in. So could be lots of issues, but this all stems back, I believe, to pandemic-related issues. Some schools are in-person, some schools are total remote, some schools are A/B. And while it may be good for kids or a family's needs, it could certainly devastate districts and harm us on our planning and futures.
Back to that one, does the bill address athletics?
No, but it would play into that. You know that would happen. That's one of our big concerns.
That's a handful of criteria, too.
OSSAA is adamantly opposed because of the year's eligibility loss. So yeah, it would play into it. It could be, if this were approved or if this were legislation, that athletes could just go to whatever program, depending on if mother or parents could get them there. Through your High State Funding Formula, this is a big thing for us. That, we do believe that the State Funding Formula needs to be tweaked. It's 30 years old. It's probably one of the most equitable funding formulas in the nation. But there's some key points. It's not the time to make significant changes to the formula when we're literally fighting a global pandemic. And the reason is enrollment is in a constant flux. Our enrollment's down this year, 200 to 300, just because people didn't want to go to in-person school and they wanted to go to virtual charters. And I will tell you that our enrollment is up since December or since second semester. We got a lot of our students back from virtual charter schools. And we just really don't want to, the formula to change. We don't, we want to see how things level out when the pandemic is over. It allows for us to plan, to determine teaching staff numbers, to plan for class size, to identify programs that we need to add or may eliminate based on our calculations. So if you remember, we worked hard for the last couple of years to take 1.9 million out of the budget because we knew from the second-year previous lookback that we were going to have a shortfall. And that's something you just can't eliminate overnight. Having the two-year lookback from the three-year high gives us some transitional time to get that done. It just can't be done immediately. And we've been successful with that because we've had that time. And we study those numbers, and we plan and meet accordingly. So we are certainly not in favor of that. Now, even though Oklahoma's current state aid formula allows schools to benefit from prior student counts for planning purposes, at the same time, those numbers are included in our chargeables. So our motor vehicle production, our school land, our county formula. So even though we're able to plan with previous numbers, still a chargeable and reduces our state aid. So that's something we're keeping our eye on. Some important legislative dates to know. Legislature convened on February 1st at noon. March 11th is the last day for the bill to be heard in chamber of origin. The 22nd of April is the last day for the bill to be heard in opposite chamber. And then May 28th is the last day of session. And the two meetings that I had this morning, we know that we have got a lot of work to do. So we're going to be really diligent and meet with our legislators and meet with our community, discuss with our community some of these issues, and to discuss our legislatures. We believe that public schools are the heart of the community, and the governor does too. So we want to keep our public schools and communities stable and in-person. So advocacy opportunities, COSA, OSSVA, USSA legislative briefings began today. We had our first one today, very informative. There will be BOE and Teacher Advocacy Dates established. And usually Zach and I talk about some dates that our teachers can go down in lobby at the Capitol.
I don't know if let me keep it in.
Oh, that's true.
So I know ODA is organizing like small group Zooms with legislators, doing virtual chats.
And obviously, we will allow our teachers to do that. We scheduled some time. And then I have a good relationship with both Senator Coleman and Representative Latrell. I talk to them regularly. I also have an open line with Ty Burns. He'll call me on a lot of questions. He is not from our, in our area. He doesn't represent Pocahontas City, but he was a former Pocahontas Public Schools teacher. So I hear from him regularly during the session. And I'm going to provide a legislative update with brief topics each board meeting. So anybody have questions, concerns, comments on our topics to watch for legislation this year?
Go back and define Stitt's 55,000 ghost students.
I can't define it. He's saying that we're being paid for students that aren't in our district, which technically...
Are these Epic kids? Are these Epic?
No, no. And I think he's using the term ghost students because that's what was used with Epic. If we use a two-year lookback period, some of those students aren't in our district. He's calling those ghost students. Now, it evens out because we're, if those kids are chargeable, and then someone else has those kids. So the formula is well-founded. It's been successful for 30 years. So it would be a hardship on public schools to plan. So. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, we'll give you a quick COVID update. I hate to get too reliable on this risk alert, but this is our COVID Alert System update. And I kind of made a different chart. You can see where we started out. It's, it actually has a green level. We've never been there. Green, yellow, orange 1, orange 2, red. We took a big tumble last week from over 100 for four to five previous weeks to 49.2. And we knew that was going to happen because we had been watching the new cases in K County every day, praying it's not a fluke. So one thing about it, when it's cold and icy, people aren't getting out testing. And if you recall, back at the end of October, when we had the ice storm, two weeks later, we went into the red. And people were gathering at that time. Of course, we lost power. Hopefully, people are being vigilant and mitigating during this ice storm or this in-law weather. See how that works. Last week, our numbers were better. And I won't read that to you, but we were down 100 people affected. Over 100 people affected from the previous week. And here's what I can say about that COVID Alert System. We feel it no matter what it is. If it's high, we're high within our in-school close contacts and isolations. If it's lower, we're lower. I will tell you, our data is going to be low this week because we haven't been in school. So we have a few family close contacts and a few family positives out there, but it's going to go down this week. And then we'll see what happens. But based on previous data, it's going to go right back up. But there is hope. It looks like cases are down in Oklahoma, hospitalizations are down. But at the same time, I read just the other night that the death rate is up. So hopefully, if we get these vaccines pushed out, that will make a difference. But all kinds of variables there. Here's our current site data. I corrected this at 8:30 last night. It actually looks really, really good. Last week, we had tons of staff returning. Our staff numbers were way down. And if you look at the green columns, these are quarantines that are pending, not identified. At our last board meeting, I had some major concerns because we had anywhere from 10 to 12 in each column that were pending. We have zero pending right now. Two weeks ago, we really worried about West Middle School. We got to about 30% of our students out. And of course, with us doing our own contact tracing, and Curtis and I discussed this every day, if there is a connection between the students. There didn't appear to be a connection, and they held their own for the following two days. Then kids were returning due to the shorter quarantine, the 10-day quarantine. So we just didn't feel the need to move to, we just held tight and watched our data rather than moving to distance learning. We had the same thing with East last week. East got the highest it's ever been. But we haven't been back to school, but they had a lot of school, a lot of kids returning on Monday and Tuesday, and that data is reflected there. So that's good news. Now, here's something that the public doesn't see. These are our site percentages affected. And if you look at our staff at all the sites, I won't read the names of our sites, but look at all the sites that have zero staff affected. Occasionally, we have one or two that have 0% of their staff affected. Our highest right now is Roosevelt with 12.9. That's four people. Not necessarily teachers, not necessarily positives. Could be support, could be an isolation or a quarantine. On the student side, our highest rate is still East, even with tons of students returning Monday and Tuesday. Today's Wednesday. I don't know, had you closed out anymore because I prepared this last night?
It was very soon.
Okay. So it's probably hovering around 12, 13% at East. Wildcat Academy is really low. Liberty is really low as far as, as far as students out. Union has two classes out right now, and they've been pretty lucky. One is a self-contained class, and then another one is a grade-level classroom that's out. So there's where we are as far as our numbers. And neither one are slated to come back tomorrow, or are they? Okay, come back Monday, book the Union classes. Washington, we got three classes out at once. Right now, we just have one. Was that supposed to come back today? The class that was out come back today, Curtis? Besides have an update?
Washington, yes.
Okay, so that, those numbers changed too.
I would think that the new CDC guidelines will artificially lower these numbers a little bit.
Maybe.
The 14 down to 10, or the new quarantines after positive or negative after seven days.
Right.
So they should impact that a little bit on the down.
Well, we're getting to the point too that we have had enough, and we track this on our running record. We have had enough that have tested positive that they're exempt from close contact quarantine for 90 days. And that's a, that's, that number's growing quite a bit. We're already, the 90 days is already up until April. Oh, I think I did some this morning that they're exempt from quarantine, like even early in the month. We also have some positives who tested so, so early in the school year that their exemption has passed, their 90 days has passed. So I will tell you that we have seen our second employee who's developed COVID twice within the 90 days. Unrelated, not connected. And with the 10-day quarantine, that will help us hold tight and keep our buildings open because we will, we will connect the dots to see if any positives are connected. And then we can also see when students are returning. Now, at the elementary sites, we automatically transition the entire classroom to distance learning. We're at a point with some of our elementary teachers that they're within that 90 days of testing positive. So they'll be in class, in their classroom, but the students will be out. And in fact, we've had some students that we've put in other classrooms because they've been exempt, so they could come to school. So it's an interesting dynamic and constant bookkeeping. So here's our district-wide trend data for first semester. And I've shared that with you each board meeting. The lowest week was that week in October when we had the ice storm. Of course, we weren't in school. I can imagine this week's going to be a low, a low trend rate too. Then the week of the 13th was our highest week. And at that point is when the board determined, the week after that, to go to distance learning for the remainder of the semester. And you, it was actually the week of the 20th that that was determined. And you can see, we just dropped. I highlighted in pink the weeks that we were on distance learning before the break. And those fell just like you would expect them to. Here's your second semester so far. The first week back, obviously, we had the fewest close contacts. After the first week, of course, it amped up. But it went down, went back up, went down. And then I believe this week will be particularly low, so our trend data. Now, there is some new guidance on our close quarantines after complete vaccination. We got that maybe just Monday. No, it had to be Friday because I originally worked on this over the weekend. And we've had some parents question us. Once their children get fully vaccinated, will they be exempt from close contact quarantines? We haven't, we had an answer because we didn't have any guidance. Here, here's the reality. Students 16 to 18, it's going to be a long way before their face comes up. But this is going to start affecting some of our teachers, some of our 65-year-old teachers who have already had their second vaccine. So individuals more than 10 days after COVID-19 vaccine completion will not be required to quarantine after being exposed to COVID-19. So I'm not sure any of our 65 and older are 10 days out. We might be getting close. But teachers won't have to quarantine once they get that second vaccination. So on day 11, that's when individual exceptions begin. So if, if, if they've had both vaccines, both the vaccine, the first dose and the booster dose, and they become a close contact and 10 full days have not passed, regular quarantine rules apply. And then regardless of prior infection, if anyone is exhibiting symptoms, we are going to isolate and quarantine. So until we get a evaluation from a COVID-19 test. So that's going to help us with our teachers a lot sooner than our students. And if this continues on up until to next year, and we fully anticipate it to continue on at least, maybe up into the fall, that will help us with students. But this may be, and, and right now, it's just 16 to 18-year-old students. So it will help us with our younger students. Any questions, comments, or discussions on our COVID update and where we are on that? There's a lot of things working in our favor, so. Curtis, you have anything?
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
There we go.
Next is the consent agenda, which included this agenda, the minutes from last meeting, and contracts under 10,000, there were just four, and they were insignificant, non-controversial. So I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
A motion from Don, a second from Judy. Does anyone else here? Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye. Action items, motion required. Consider taking action on the following district financial report. These are the standard reports that we talk about in all the finance meetings. And it also includes the ratification and approval of payrolls, which is a very big thing to a lot of people. So I'd look for a motion to approve items by...
So, I'd look for a motion to approve, aye to five, a through m.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Judy and a second from Don. Yes, I think I figured it out. Call for the vote.
This is true. Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Nasa?
Motion carries. Number two, the board to consider take action on the resolution determining the maturities of the setting that's commonplace to sell six point nine million dollars in general obligation, building bonds for the school district. This is, Brenda, is this the last payment on lease revenue?
Yes, yes, this is the last time on this, the last.
From the bond issue and the lease revenue we did. Uh, it looks like Stephen McDonald wants to have a meeting on the fourteenth of April at eleven-thirty to, uh, sell the bonds. Comments or questions about this?
No, just checking the calendar, forgot to let you see, I've seen the quarantine good.
Are you looking?
Yeah, I have a motion for the, the.
You okay, Curtis?
Yeah, I like motion through.
Second.
You okay? Motion from Don, second from Judy, call for the vote.
This is true. Aye, Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, consider take action on the Pocahontas City School District calendar for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. I have a question, but I would defer to Judy, which I think you got some color on this. You have any problems with the calendars presented?
We talked about it in curriculum.
No, I don't have a problem.
Question I would have.
I wait, I, I wonder what these three days are gonna do to us.
Well, we really haven't even had time to calculate it because we didn't know what we were gonna do this morning. We had, we had a few days, hours built in that we could use, but with the ransomware attack, and then the snow days in October, and then we're gonna see how this plays out. Um, yeah, we'll have to get that info out.
Okay, that's this year's calendar.
That'll be on this year's, yeah. For next year, it's a question I have, Shelley.
Okay.
The seven professional development days, are those student contact days, with students being in school those days?
No.
So, we're gonna back off of the students having to go to school for six days.
You know, we, we converted, we changed this year's calendar to, uh, convert our professional development days to in-person.
But the students had to attend school.
Right.
On professional development this year, they're not next year.
Well, for some of them. After we got to a point where we had to go to distance learning, we wanted that face-to-face time with our students, so that was the recommendation, and we changed that. But I will tell you that we are going to need that professional development, uh, in addition, without a doubt, there are going to be achievement gaps, and, um, I, I will tell you that our kids' emotional resources are waning, their mental health is struggling, and, and I will have to say, our teachers happens to be struggling too. They, their health is waning, their mental health is waning. So, we're gonna need to make sure that we have those opportunities for professional development, to maximize our resources to respond to the effects of the pandemic.
So, does a hundred and sixty-seven instructional days include the seven? So, it's a hundred actual?
Right, that, that's student contact days.
Hundred, hundred student contact days we have this year.
Sixty-seven, I don't have my calendar with me.
So, it's probably closer to a hundred.
About, well.
Hundred and seventy-five, something like that.
If we count our, if we count our distance learning days, yeah. Like, just fewer than that, because we did have a couple of professional development
I, I guess I would be cautious if we come back and ask those students, after we tell them they're not gonna have to come to school on those seven days. I would be cautious, or I would be very agreeable to have them come back to school on those days. Even though we would like them in class, but once we tell them that they don't have to come, it really wouldn't be good business to.
Well, I, I definitely agree with this. This was just an exceptional year because we lost that so many contact days with quarantines.
And everybody's okay with the winter breaks when they are? Really, I'm asking this, Don and I hadn't seen this.
And Mr. Riley, you might have heard us talk about why we didn't have a committee. You know, typically, we have a committee, a calendar committee, so Curtis?
Yeah, we're gonna, we used to remember our AC team, and really, we've kinda, in the last three or four years, have gotten some boxes that we checked off, and, you know, from our administrators in, and the teacher in, and the community in, and this one kinda checked off all the boxes. Uh, so that was kind of really good, and everybody felt like they met all those of our needs. Uh, we don't like to start on Monday or Tuesday. Uh, like, always like to have more weekends than Christmas party. Uh, we wanted to act a little more, like, just things like that, and then, uh, certainly we, since everybody kinda agreed, kinda met all of our, all the requirements we had in the past five or six years, uh, didn't really wanna have a reason for people yet. Uh, didn't feel like it'd be very effective meeting over Zoom, uh, had it felt that is a very discussion format. It's pretty good for one-way communication, and, um, we kinda reached out, we kinda reached out to administrators and teachers, and Zach sent out, uh, some computers for any other variations we wanted to look at. Really, just kinda came to a consensus that this one's really fits the district, and we're trying to get done, so. Um, so with that being a fact, definitely feel the need to have this huge district-wide committee meeting, certainly not in person, and really, I feel my thoughts should be more of a, a little more conversation.
And our association agreed with that, and our marketing unit, and our parents were okay with that.
Did I miss it in the stuff you guys sent us, because I couldn't find it in my, on my computer, the calendar? Is it long? Is it in there somewhere? I just couldn't find it. The calendar itself.
Uh, you should have made it in your hand, you have notes.
No, I just didn't see it. I, I didn't find it, maybe it's just leaving stuff somewhere. I saw this, I can't look through it, I couldn't find it. It doesn't count.
Okay, cool.
Did you see it coming, Robin?
While we're looking at that, let's talk about the two snow days. If we would anticipate sending hotspots, Chromebooks home, would we really need two snow days? Or would we, you know, anticipate school out two days early if we didn't use them? If we convert it to distance learning?
This week's real good example of that. Sometimes that snow day exists like that, and we don't have devices out.
But normal snow days, you have a pretty good indication.
So, why are we bringing them back in and taking them back? In case you do have these kind of deals, why don't we just, why don't we keep them?
That's kinda where I was going.
We're changing that process.
I mean, it doesn't make sense. We give them something, we take it back every other day, or whatever.
Barbara?
Why?
For our secondary, maybe keep theirs, but our level entries, we don't have cases for those devices. And so, you know, we have two thousand and some odd devices that we're sending out, but we don't have cases, and we don't have that many backups, so we're taking that from broken screens. So, that's, that's our decision.
You talking about the computers, you talking about the hotspots?
The Chromebooks.
I'm talking about the hotspots.
Hotspots, we're changing that process, they're going home with families.
Not only, you know, there's still needed the device.
Yeah, I said I have a device, so.
But no, we have a twenty-five-dollar insurance policy.
Yeah, you must have had these men on cases and stuff, and we didn't get any cases for them?
Well.
It doesn't make sense.
That was a decision in, in property committee that we decided against that, so.
I thought we used the, I thought we were gonna use the twenty-five dollars per instrument insurance fee.
Yeah, we did, but we just didn't purchase cases. The board decided not to do that.
Right, but we were gonna use the.
So, you're the one that decided that.
Let's say it again.
You're the one that decided why.
Well, I didn't want to buy cases. I didn't want to buy cases because we were gonna use the insurance money for the broken ones.
The thing is, they didn't, they didn't send it home with them, so.
I think we do need to take a look at sending them home, and maybe we need to buy cases for them.
Well, I'm gonna recommend that, I'm gonna make that as a recommendation with our SRT funds.
But the last two days, if the kids would have had them in advance, we wouldn't have had them.
Yeah, we would have had them maybe at today's school.
Right.
Yeah, could have been at school two days earlier.
Right.
I mean, that, that's where you're coming from, I think.
Yeah, that's it.
It's the same thing on these two.
Because you never know, it's gonna happen, it could even be in the middle of summer or springtime, you got tornadoes and stuff, they could stay.
Tornadoes.
Whatever.
You name it, it could be.
We've got power, we got internet, they should be able to go to school.
The snow days work well, the way that, if you look at the way the calendar ends, the snow days work kinda really well in there, uh, because.
But also, graduation's the same day as the last day of school on the calendar too.
I'm sorry, you were not?
Graduation's the same day as the last day of school, the way the calendar is written, which may be okay, I, I'm just saying that.
And that hasn't been established, that's typically, though, the last day of school, the Friday of the last day of school, is when graduation is established. It's not on the calendar.
Okay, right. Yeah, but that, that's, well, it's on a Friday, so that's when it really has to be, Friday being the last day of school. But that, it's a, Judy and Nancy in their committee, I mean, I'm okay with it. Unlike Don, I, I think we need to take a hard look at, do we wanna send Chromebooks, hotspots home in advance? Because we've got a pretty big chunk of government money coming in to help.
That, that's going to be the recommendation, and if that pleases the board, we, we need to take those measures. Uh, it's Oklahoma, we can't predict the weather, or, or we would have sent them home on Friday.
Okay.
We still got, two of them.
Yeah, we'll be sending them home and, and at least until we get out of danger for implement weather, and then we move on to tornado.
When does our contract expire for hotspots?
Uh, end of the school year.
So, do we anticipate having a vice meeting next year?
Uh, we will have to make sure that every family has one, and, and we'll probably, uh, we can talk about some ideas that we're discussing for next year. Should we have to go on distance learning? Um, I would hope not next year, but.
It may be.
I can't predict the pandemic either.
I mean, it could be a new point.
I, I think we need to purchase one per family.
Chromebook or hotspot?
Hotspot, everybody needs a Chromebook, which we have that. We just don't send them home with our elementary. We were fine with secondary. Um, I can tell you some problems that we'll run into by sending the hotspot home and leave it home, but at this point, it is a bookkeeping, it's not efficient bookkeeping. At this point, here we are, nearly March, hopefully, we won't have distance learning or as many quarantines. I'm of the opinion, and Barbara and I talked last night, that we send the, the hotspot home with the oldest child in the family at this point.
Should we be publicly negotiating with the carriers right now for better deals on hotspots, because they kinda took advantage of this one carrier?
Uh, AT&amp;T was a little bit higher, and, and we would have probably gone with all T-Mobile, but one part of town, T-Mobile works, and one part of town, AT&amp;T works. And we're finding ourselves swapping out with our kids if the AT&amp;T or the T-Mobile don't work in the area that they live.
Would you hate to buy four hundred hotspots if we don't even think we're gonna need any, if we don't have them?
Who knows? And, but then where would we be if we couldn't get them? Luckily, everything that we're replacing now is T-Mobile, and our T-Mobile rep, it, I mean, he works with us. We, we can get in a need for hotspots, and he will get them to us, Ryan, maybe two to three days. I mean, literally here, in our hands. So, he's been real, uh, efficient, and we're hanging on to the AT&amp;T that we have because, you're right, they are a lot more expensive, so.
How much would you agree with?
Hey, we have a motion from Don to approve the school calendar, second, I sent from Judy.
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
This is true?
Aye.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, consider and take action on declaring March second as Read Across America Day. Can we talk about that, Shelley?
Uh, this is celebrated in conjunction with Dr. Seuss's birthday, and it's an opportunity that we can get, uh, different readers via Zoom this year to read to our students and, um, share the love of reading. Our teachers go all out on that. Typically, we do have guest speakers, but we, we're gonna have to have, we can record reading of books this year and share them across the district.
So, the question becomes, how is Dr. Seuss to manage, or on March second?
I, I couldn't tell you. Google that somebody.
Anybody know? I guess nobody knows.
No giggling, Zach's over there giggling.
Okay.
Do you, do you have any near school?
I read them a kid, I don't remember whether I read, read Dr. Seuss or not. Okay, so I would accept a motion to declare March second as Read Across America Day.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Second, motion from Judy, second from Don, call for the vote.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
This is true?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, is consider take action on changes to activity fund custodians or bonding authorization. We've had a couple retirements, so we need to make a couple of changes. We need Jeff to become the, uh, child nutrition, nutrition director, and Leanne Allen, the district activities clerk, to replace Cardo Webb.
Make motion through.
Have a motion from Don, second from Judy, call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
This is true?
Aye.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, consider take action on agreement with Bob Hurley, Dodge.
Chrysler Jeep.
Chrysler Jeep. What's the R?
Dodge Chrysler.
Not Ram, where?
Ram.
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 Ram. Purchase a Cartoane for maintenance department. Any comments or questions about that?
No, I'll make motion through.
Have a motion from Don, and a second from Judy, call for the vote.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
This is true?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, we don't need an executive session, do we?
We do not, for once.
That's Don or Judy, anyone need one?
Yeah, I'd like to have one, just her.
Okay.
If you could, real quick, just five minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to convene to executive session for the following purpose, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss the purchase of, or appraisal of real property, and to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning opinion, claims, and litigation.
Make motion through.
And a motion from Don, second from Judy, call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
This is true?
Aye.
Mr. Nasa?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Okay, we're officially back into session. Uh, recital of the board president, minutes of executive session will kept by the board's